Hey Josh. Couldn't hear you.
Hey, do you want me to make you a panelist in these or do you care? Gotcha. Okay. Sounds good. Yep, nope, that's cool. Thanks Josh. Bye.
Am I hearable?
I can hear you.
Thanks, thanks, everybody. You see all this? They look the old man, take his ass. It's four o'clock. Do we have everybody present and accounted for? I see Walt is not back yet. I'm wondering if Lee was able to call in today. He's traveling.
Karen, I haven't seen Lee yet.
Okay.
And I am not sure if everybody from Steeplejack is here. I know there's one so far that I can see. If there's somebody in the waiting or attendee that is part of the group that isn't part of the panelist, if you raise your hand, I can go ahead and allow you in. Well, there's a group. There's Bob and Eric. Okay, I think we're getting there. Except for Walt's in too. So everybody seems to be here.
Okay.
Jenna's missing.
Jenna is actually not missing. We'll talk about her in just a few minutes. I know Leah's out of town. I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. It's 4:01 PM. And our first order of business. Oh, I should say this is the meeting of the Manzita Planning Commission. Our first order of business is to approve the minutes from our July 18, 2022 meeting. I'm assuming that all of the commissioners have seen the minutes and I would ask at this time for any additions, corrections. Just jump ahead and say, hearing none. Entertain a mo-
Hey Karen, I don't know if you can hear me, but you are going in and out and you're frozen on the screen right now. So.
Oh, no.
Yeah, just I wonder if it's. Okay, I think I can see you now. So I'll just let you know if it happens again, but I don't think anyone caught the
Okay.
Action.
Let me, let me absent myself for just a minute and make sure nobody else is using the internet in the house. Sometimes that slows down the video. So give me one second.
True thing.
About that, am I back?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, in that case, I'll re-say what I said a moment ago, and that is we want to, our first order of business is to approve the minutes from the July 18, 2022 meeting. I'm assuming the commissioners have all seen them and if there are additions, subtractions, corrections, spelling errors, now's the time to correct them. I hear none, so I would entertain a motion to approve minutes as submitted.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
Is there a second?
No, second.
Thank you, John. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Okay, none opposed? All right, minutes are approved as submitted. Okay, the next order of business is to have the audience introduce themselves. It looks like we don't have a whole lot, large audience today. But I would throw it to Scott to turn people's unmute people as needed.
Okay, as I unmute you, go ahead and state your name. And if you're a resident, give us your address and phone number, or at least your address. And Bridget, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Hi, I am a owner of two houses on Horizon, 8844 and 8822 Horizon.
Thank you, Bridget. Connie, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Connie Ganderwall, and I live on Glenessin. I'm a full-time resident.
Thank you, Connie. And Donna, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Donna and Mark Miller and 869 Nob Cone, full-time resident.
All right, thank you, Donna. And Linda, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Good afternoon, I'm Linda Kestner, full-time resident at 588 Epo Avenue.
Thanks, Linda. And Mark, if you want to unmute yourself.
Oh, hi, Mark Kestner, Epo Avenue, full-time resident.
All right, thanks, Mark. And Matt, you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
I'm Matt Gray. I'm one of the four co-owners of 194 Lanita Avenue, which is right next to the proposed site. Myself, my husband and our two business partners live in Niaconning.
All right, thanks, Matt. And Rick, you should be able to unmute yourself now.
Hi, I'm Rick Hinkus, one of the developers with Highlands, Manzanita.
All right, thanks, Rick. And then we have Sandy, you should be able to unmute yourself. Sandy, you should be able to unmute yourself now.
I really don't have anything to say right now, so I'll unmute.
Well, we're asking everybody to introduce themselves.
Oh, okay. Sandy Wood, I live at 120 Bee Swacks.
All right, thanks, Sandy. And then we have another Leila in here. I don't know if it's, if it's you, Leila, or somebody else.
It's Leila.
Is that Leila? Oh, okay. Well, Leila, you can unmute yourself and introduce yourself. And I'm not hearing you, Leila. Okay, I'll allow Terry to unmute himself. That'll be the last one. Terry DiSaro.
Yes, I'm here. Just observing, listening.
We'd like you to, everybody to introduce themselves.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, yes, Terry DiSaro. I'm one of the owners of the property next door to the, the Steeplejack project.
Okay, thank you, Terry. And the last one is, is Lilo Salmon, but I think she might be having a problem with her mic. So that was everybody in the wait, in attendance.
Thank you, Scott. I appreciate that. I'm gonna turn it over now to Leila to talk a little bit about the planning commission's selection process.
Thank you very much. So someone noted that Jenna wasn't here today, and that's because Jenna is no longer on the planning commission. She is our newest appointed city councillor. So becoming a city councillor, she automatically needs to resign her position on the planning commission. So with that in mind, we do have two folks that are up for that hers terms end in December. So according to the planning commission ordinance, the mayor would appoint a new planning commissioner to fill out the end of Jenna's term. However, the city council has recently adopted new rules that apply to their rules of procedure with respect to committee appointments and commission appointments. And that process includes the establishment of a selection committee, which would include one representative from the committee in which we are filling a position. So that would be this body, the planning commission, myself, and then someone from the city council. And then the three of us would establish selection criteria for for this process, which the city council would review and provide feedback and then ultimately adopt. And then we would accept applications for the position. The three-person committee would review those applications, determine a shortlist for interviews, interview candidates, and then make a recommendation to the city council to fill that seat. I did want to mention that there are two seats, as I mentioned, that are up in December. And so as part of this process, we're no longer reappointing people directly. Folks that have served on the commission, whose appointments end in December, would actually need to participate in the application process. That was something that the city council asked to be part of this process. And so what I wanted to do was just take a moment to describe that process and then make a recommendation that we actually go through the process to do all three appointments at once. This process is a lot more involved than just directly appointing someone to fill a position. And so going through two processes really isn't very efficient. And so that's the approach that I'd like to take to both appoint somebody to fill out the rest of Jenna's term, which ends in 2024, and then the two upcoming appointments, the two upcoming positions that complete at the end of this year. So I wanted to throw that out there and see if anybody had any questions. And then my hope today was to have the planning commission nominate somebody to serve on that committee with me. And then at the next council meeting, we would select somebody from the city council to participate in the selection process. Then we three would work together to establish criteria that we would bring to the council in November, likely accept applications for a couple of weeks in November to hopefully make a recommendation to the city council in December.
I guess first thing to ask would be, is any member of the planning commission interested in serving on the criteria committee?
And those folks would help with the interviews and evaluation of the candidates too. So it should be someone who's not, whose term is not up at the end of the year.
To tell you the truth, Leila, I don't know when my term is up. Am I one of the ones who's?
No, actually, and there's something here. I'll pull it up on the website. We actually created a committees and commissions webpage for this reason. So hang tight and I'll pull it up. Meantime, perhaps if you have any feedback on the approach of doing all three at once, would appreciate that. Not everybody at once, please. Okay, hang tight. I'm gonna show folks who are here. Oh, Scott, can you let me share my screen? Thank you, sir. Did y'all see the city's webpage? Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so if you go under government and you go to committee and commission directory, this shows who's on the council, who's on the planning commission, budget committee, et cetera, charter rental committee. And it has the length of term, the month those terms expire, et cetera. So Karen, you're next year. Bert and Steve, your terms are up in December of 2022. And we'll have to remove Jenna from this list because she's now up here. So for folks that are interested in serving on committees and want to know when availability or opportunities arise, this is the best spot to get it now. I thought it'd be good to have that information though for folks.
Yeah, that's great.
Yeah.
I don't see a huge amount of enthusiasm from the rest of the panel, so I will volunteer myself as tribute.
Excellent.
If you'd like, if that's okay with the rest of the commission.
Barring no objections.
Yep. Okay, great. Give me a thumbs up. Thank you. Okay, well, I'll be your, I'll be your man then.
Great, you can be our woman. And I may actually ask council to nominate somebody prior to the council meeting. So we can meet a little sooner and maybe try to get ahead of it. So we can do, be sure to have a slate for folks in December.
Yep, sounds good.
Okay, great. And if folks have any other questions, don't hesitate to reach out, but I'm looking forward to working with you. Thank you for volunteering, Karen.
Sure, no problem. I just want to add to the record, since we've got it open, that I really want to acknowledge Jenna's contributions in the last couple of years on the commission. I think she's brought some really good energy and focus, and I think she's going to be great on the council. So that's my thanks to, public thanks to Jenna. Okay, so now comes the most boring part of the meeting. And that's just setting, setting us up for the hearing today. And I'm going to go through the procedure that we use for land use hearings. And I want to make sure that I get through all of it because it's all part of the record on this hearing. Okay, so my name is Karen Reddick-Yurka. I'm the chair for the Manzita Planning Commission. And I will be presiding over two land use hearings today. Members of the planning commission are appointed by city council and serve as volunteers. This is the time and place set for public hearings in the matter of a design review application for each of two projects at 220 Lanita on tax lots three and four, block 14, Mansita Beach subdivision by Harder Holdings Coastal LLC. Um, the first hearing concerns the West project on tax lot four. Did I get that right? West project, tech, tax lot four? I believe that's correct. Um, I hope so because that hearing is now open. The decision to approve or deny this request will be based on the design review standards listed in section 4.080, 4.090, and 4.137 through 4.156, and the standards for the commercial C1 zone in section 3.040 uh, of ordinance 95 dash four. The specific criteria are summarized in the staff report and will be reviewed at this hearing. Excuse me one sec. All testimony and evidence must be directed toward this approval criteria or other criteria in the zoning ordinance which you believe may apply. Please note in their decision, the Planning Commission may reject comments or ordinance citations that do not directly apply to this request. Uh, note that an issue which may be the basis for an appeal to Luba must be raised not later than the close of the record or at the following final evidentiary hearing of the case. Such issues must include specific statements or evidence that allow the commission and those in attendance an adequate opportunity to respond. Each case will see that the applicant's presentation, followed by the staff report, comments from those in favor of the request, and finally those opposed to the request. Commission staff and participants may direct questions to those who testified. Finally, the applicant will be entitled to a rebuttal. Generally, the applicant is entitled to 20 minutes to make their presentate, presentation. All other speakers should try to limit your comments to three minutes. Please avoid repetition. If someone else has already expressed your thoughts, it is perfectly all right to state that you agree with the statements made by a previous speaker. If you sent a written response to the proposal, please do not repeat your comments. They are already part of the record. Prior to the conclusion of the first hearing on a land use application, a participant may request an opportunity to present additional evidence or testimony regarding the application. If such a request is made, it will be up to the commission to deter, to determine if the hearing will be continued to a date and time certain, or if the record will be held open for submission of additional evidence or testimony. If the record is kept open, it will be for a minimum of seven days with a short rebuttal period thereafter afforded to the applicant. With that out of the way, I need to ask the audience to raise your hand if there are any objections to the notice that was sent in this case. Scott, you'll tell me if, if anybody raises a hand.
I'll let you know. At this time, I have no hands raised.
Okay, um, any objections to the jurisdiction of this commission to hear and consider this case?
And I do not have any hands raised.
Okay, are there any declarations from the members of this body uh, of conflicts of interest or bias, ex parte contact or site visits? Now let's start with Steve.
I visited the site. I have had no contact. I'm not biased and, um, what's the last one?
No conflicts of interest.
No conflict of interest.
Okay, thank you. Bert?
Uh, I have visited the site. I have no bias, no, uh, ex parte contact, and what was that last one?
Awesome. It's always conflicts of interest.
No conflict of interest.
Yeah, okay. How about you, Phil?
Uh, no bias, no conflict of interest, no ex parte contact. And I have visited the site.
How about you, John?
Uh, no conflict of interest, no bias, uh, no ex parte contact, and I've visited the site.
Okay. And for my part, um, I have visited the site. Um, I have had no ex, ex parte contact with uh, anyone involved in this application. I have no bias and no conflicts of interest. Uh, hearing that, does any member of the audience wish to challenge the right of any member of the commission to hear this matter by reason of actual or potential conflict of interest or bias?
And Karen, I do not have any hands raised.
Okay, all right. So we're now ready to proceed with the hearing on what we're calling Project A, a retail business and three-unit hot hotel on lot four, the West property. Did I get that correct?
Correct.
Okay, great. Um, so would the applicant please give an overview of this development to the commission?
Okay, um, as a customary to share a screen during this time.
Sure.
Just a minute, Bob, let me make your co-host, and then you should be able to.
Okay, appreciate it. While we're waiting, um, uh, Scott Edwards Architecture, um, is the firm that I'm associated with. I'm an architect there and project manager. I'm accompanied tonight by Eric Wenzel, who is also an architect who is working on the project. Um, you may hear him speak. You may chime in. We've been working on this project together. So we've, um, he may have more, um, input on something than, than I do in some certain cases. Um, we also have, um, Brody Day, who is with Steeplejack Brewing. Um, he's also here as a panelist as well. Um, and he, yeah, so owner of representation is here as well. I wanted to note that.
And you should be able to share your screen, Bob.
Okay. Okay, so this is the lot four, which is building A or the, um, um, hold on, I'm getting an error from Zoom. Can you still hear me?
Mm-hmm, yep.
Um, okay, I'll keep proceeding. Zoom seems to be working fine. Uh, so this, this lot here is, um, it's, um, developed separately. We are obviously submitting two applications at the same time, um, but they are considered and buildable and developable independently as two lots. So we'll start with this one. Um, the site itself has, um, kind of minimal existing features currently. Um, the, um, goal and the interest is to develop this to be a retail space, um, on this lower level, um, which is close to the street level here, right at the, um, at the northwest corner of the site. Um, we're developing a, um, this would be an arcade retail space, uh, that has an opening out to a courtyard area, um, to the east. And also this back, um, area here, this building, uh, is, uh, it's an extension of this building. It's all the same building, but it is, um, a small three-unit short-term rental hotel. Um, the site itself is very, uh, has a steep slope to it, um, but we are satisfying the parking, um, requirements on the site that would be mandated by having hotel units, um, on the adjacent lot in the back. So we're tucking all of that back through, um, a shared easement approach. So I know that parking lot will be something that comes up that we'll talk about. But as, um, that is the, the one item that would be maintained by easement, um, for access for that shared driveway, which is located right in the center, um, between those two lots. The, this is the retail space on that, the northwest corner. We have a small couple steps down to get to the courtyard. Um, there leads you to a garden, a bocce ball court, um, and then entrances into that retail space from the east side and the north side. Um, there's an ADA ramp or accessible ramp to bring you down to this lower courtyard area to ensure access into the retail space. Um, and then a series of plantings, gardens, that sort of thing, um, down on the lower level here. And the accessible path would take you to the accessible unit of the three-unit hotel, which is down here on this north side. Um, we have three units, as I said. There are two studio units located here. I'm going to search over the architecture plans to reveal that. Um,
Hey, Bob, I think we're stuck on the, um, cover sheet still.
Oh, really?
There might be some type of error going on.
Any better?
No, it's still there.
Okay. Um, I'll share it, then maybe start again. Yeah. I apologize. Any better?
I'll give it a second.
There we go. Okay, uh, can everyone see this one now? Okay, great. So studio unit, and then the two bedroom unit would be accessed from the south side where there is a, a separate entry off of that, the, the backside of the, or the, the southeast corner of the lot. Um, I'll go back to the civil plan because I, can you guys see the civil plan that I'm showing now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thanks, Erin. Um, so the, if you, since it sounds like you didn't see that earlier when I was motioning, but the, um, to bring things up to grade, we have the, a, a couple of small steps to bring you down to a courtyard that will help contain like the sound and then, um, um, the, the side of that outdoor courtyard here. So it'll, it'll feel like a kind of a garden sort of environment. We have an accessible ramp that brings you down into that courtyard for access into the retail space. And then a studio accessible unit for that hotel, which would be right down here on the outside of that, um, accessible, um, or that hotel area. The shared driveway, which I mentioned really is located here with the parking lot back here to serve that. So the accessible parking would take you back into the space to get into that hotel unit. Um, that's kind of general overview. On the second floor, we have a, uh, a roof deck that is for this retail space, um, for kind of, uh, seasonal outdoor seating. It'll have planters on top, uh, some tables and chairs. Um, that would be used during the busy times of the year when, um, the, the need would arise for that and when the weather permits it. Um, I know the Airbnb or an Airbnb, sorry, we're so used to calling them different, different names these days, but it is a short-term hotel. Um, and so that access here for the upstairs would be for, uh, the studio unit here on this side. And so this one would enter off of a shared, um, outdoor landing, um, for that, that would be, uh, conjoined with that, that roof deck area too. Um, and then the lower, the second, uh, two-bedroom unit would only be accessible from the, the ground floor. It does not have an extra access to that balcony space. Um, each of the units have a shared, have an outdoor area to them as well for, um, the upstairs unit. They have an outdoor balcony, and then that lower unit has a little garden, um, on the west side there. Um, and then the two-bedroom unit would have, um, a, a larger kind of garden set up here down in the, on the southwest corner with landscaping. Um, stormwater is handled on-site with, uh, infiltration planters, um, as well as permeable pavers for the parking areas. I think that concludes it. Eric, do you have anything else to add that I missed?
No, that sounded good. Thanks.
Okay, um, Walt, would you like to give your report on this, please?
Okay, uh, thank you. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, real good. Um, again, this is the project. There are two projects here tonight. This is the one on lot four. It's a combination of commercial space and also a, uh, hotel. Um, as known by the applicant, uh, the subject property has a single tax lot, but is made of two separate subdivision lots. Each of these, um, certainly are, are understanding that they can be developed independently. And what we're looking at is the project on lot four. Applicant provided a summary of the, uh, layout. Um, again, just quickly, there's about a thousand square foot, actually 960 square foot retail frontage. They're looking at a video game arcade. There's a three-unit hotel, one of them a two-bedroom, and the other one singles. Um, access is through a driveway, which is really designed to provide parking for the hotel. And I'll get into the parking a little bit later. Um, these activities are permitted within the C1 zone, which is the zoning on the subject property. Uh, the application does require a design review, uh, approval, uh, through the, uh, Planning Commission. Um, I think the applicant touched on these, the phrase Airbnb, these qualify as hotel units. Want to make sure there's no misunderstanding. Uh, when it comes to the, uh, review for design review, section 3 dot 040, uh, sub three of our, uh, development code, uh, contains the basic requirements for the C1 zone. I'll just briefly touch on these to note that, in summary, they do comply. Uh, the building does meet all the setback requirements. The building official review, the building plans, you know that the, uh, uh, structure, uh, is within the 28-foot, uh, six-inch, uh, height limitation. The, they meet the, uh, minimum requirements for landscaping. There are no awnings or marquees that, uh, project from the building that would violate, um, uh, those provisions. The, uh, submitted plans include a stormwater plan as well as calculations, um, and directing the stormwater to, um, uh, as he described various, uh, parts of the, uh, property. Um, the floor area ratio of the building is point 639, and the ratio does not exceed the point 65 limit. Uh, signs, um, if installed, must comply with their code requirements, and that could be handled administratively. With regard to the issue of parking, uh, since the lot does not exceed 5,000 square feet in area, uh, commercial, uh, parking is not required, um, for, for the retail space. The hotel space must provide the parking. And in the staff report, I go through the calculations that in this case they are required to provide, uh, five parking spaces. At least one of them.
Anybody else having?
Hello?
Uh, I'm sorry, you were cutting in and out for me. I don't know if it was just you or, or everybody else.
Okay, okay, hold on for a moment. Let me turn the volume up to 11. Is that a little better?
Yeah, it was, it was my video connection was frozen. So it might have been me. I'm sorry for interrupting.
Oh, no problem whatsoever. Um, again, the staff report goes through the calculations for the hotel. They're required to have, uh, five spaces. They're using the adjacent site for their, um, uh, parking. Uh, they do include the one ADA space, which is required. There are two additional spaces on the site, on the adjacent site. However, the applicant will need to find two more spaces to meet the five-space requirement. Um, and those spaces can be within 500 feet of the subject property. Um, uh, let's see. Provisions of 137 to 142, address site plan reviews, use of the fill for structural elevation, uh, installation of parking structures, and matters regarding trees. I'll just note that the, um, significant fill is not required in this case. Proposed parking is all located in the back, uh, on the adjacent property. There are no existing trees on-site. However, additional plantings will be, uh, provided along the, um, perimeter. Um, section 4 dot 150 seeks to determine whether the proposal maintains the unique character of the community. In this case, the exterior will be primarily finished in vertical redwood siding. Trim pieces will include wood and metal features, designed similar to the proposed restaurant, which we will be reviewing on lot three, and somewhat similar to other commercial buildings. Um, unbalanced while the design is original, um, it generally fits into the area, certainly does not offer a finish or color scheme that significantly contrasts with, uh, existing structures. Uh, sections 4.151 to 4.153 address definitions, requirements for a design review, and the review procedures. I'll simply note that, uh, that is the purpose of tonight's hearing. We are following those, uh, requirements. With regard to specific design criteria, um, these are found in section 4.155. Um, and let's see, there are, uh, five items here. The first one. turns to the setback from the street or sidewalk. Design creates visually interesting or compatible relationship. As the applicant noted, there is open space adjacent to the sidewalk. There is basically that interaction between the street and the commercial structure. And again, the structure does meet those setback requirements. There is no, the second item looks at vegetation. There is no existing vegetation on the site that will be maintained. But they will be including a lot of new plantings and shrubs that are designed basically to correspond to plantings that are found in the Pacific Northwest. And they will also serve as part of their storm drainage facilities. Item three, the design relates or integrates the proposed landscaping to the adjoining space. Again, I think the way it's designed, the hotel functions are in the back. Commercial retail is up front and I think that integrates well with the street. The applicant noted that the yard design is similar to other area commercial structures. I think it does enhance this portion of the street. The design gives attention to the placement of storage or mechanical equipment. Basically, on the layout, such equipment is placed in dedicated utility rooms. Scary mechanical and electrical equipment is placed behind the structure as not to be visible from Lenita. And finally, all functions, uses and improvements are arranged to harmonize with the natural characteristics. I'll just simply reiterate that the applicant noted the site will integrate into the stormwater drainage plan and there will be landscaping and also things such as perforated paving stones to help with the drainage. Finally, we come to section 4.156, which is the criteria for architectural landscaping. The first item talks about integration and harmonizing of the development. I think in this case, usually design is subjective, but I think generally consistent finish color style with the majority of the buildings. It uses a wooden exterior as many adjacent structures and does not include the use of corrugated siding or similar metal finishes. The building and arrangements respond to the surrounding neighborhood. And the focus is on the retail, which is going to be attracting the public and that faces the street. Second item is landscaping. Again, I think I've touched on that. The applicant indicated Oregon and coastal native plants were selected. These will include wax myrtle, Pacific vine maples, rhododendrons and being incorporated in the irrigation. Irrigation system will be incorporated. These plantings will also be incorporated in storm drainage. With regard to landscaping, as noted earlier, this layout does comply with the minimum requirements for landscaping coverage. Grading on the site is the fifth item. The grading and contouring were studied, designed to make sure stormwater is accommodated on site. There's paver, stormwater planters, along with roof stormwater loads were all considered necessary calculations were submitted as part of this application. This design certainly does avoid monotony. There are two levels. I think there is some visual interest. And I think it's also enhanced by the terrorist patio space. The seventh item is the design addresses pedestrian nature of commercial space. I think I've covered that previously. Again, it's forward facing to the public space. Lighting will not be industrial strength, if you will. Looking at the schematics and the designs, they're very simple lighting generally on doorway entrances, entrances along walkways and near the outdoor seating. Lights are commercial in size and style and face downward sort of direct the light downwards. Finally, is the issue of compatibility. Just simply note, this structure does comply with the city's height requirements, FAR restrictions. The finish is, you know, wooden in nature, gabled roofs, et cetera. This is not a monolithic project broken up with canopies, gabled roofs, upper story setbacks. I think on balance, the improvement is consistent with the intent of the design standards, while not in architectural match with surrounding structures, the design and finish are generally compatible with these structures. Finally, there is a three unit hotel as part of this project. Hotels are defined under ORS 699. And we had a previous discussion on hotels. We are including recommended conditions that they comply with the state requirements as well as comply with necessary county requirements. Unbalanced, we believe this proposal does comply with the code requirements. So our recommendation would be approved subject to the conditions that are found in the staff report. And with that, that concludes the report.
Okay. Are there any questions from the commissioners to either the applicant or staff? And I've got a bunch of them, so I'm going to wait and see if any of you hit hit mine first.
We'll follow you, Karen.
Oh, you can. You can go back.
Yeah.
Clean up for me. Top garden area that's shown on the second floor.
Excuse me, Karen, you did cut out there for a while. Could you start start again? I'm sorry, my current to apologize on the interruption.
No, I appreciate it. I wanted everybody to actually hear. Okay, so I have a bunch of questions and my first one is on that seating area. The open area on this rooftop, I guess, is what you're calling it. First of all, there isn't anything on the actual second story roof. You know, the very top rooftop. And the rooftop garden and I wanted to make sure that there isn't another garden area above what's visible from Lenita. Is that correct?
No, that's correct. The the lower retail structure has the the roof deck on it with the seating and planters. And then the back structure has the the form. There will be a gabled roof. So there will not be any any additional things on top of that one.
Thank you. So on the rooftop structure above the retail area, who sits there? Who goes there? What is what? Is there something served there or is it just people from the street? If they see an empty seat can go up and sit down and watch, do people watching or I'm not clear how that particular area relates to the retail space.
It's intended to be overflow seating for that, the retail space itself. So there would be some kind of small food service that we're in discussion with the owner on or like a little bit of, you know, maybe some some beer, that sort of thing. And that would be a part of the the outdoor experience of that space would be say if it's like ice, like soft serve, for instance, like if someone were to grab soft serve, go outside and sit down in the garden area or go up to get a little bit of a better view and enjoy the street. It's meant to kind of connect to the little garden area and also to like the street a large, but it would be under the jurisdiction of the owner.
Okay, and speaking of the soft serve, in some of the pictures or some of the drawings, there's a walk up window and then some in the other drawings, it's not there. Do you intend to walk up window?
You know, we explored that. Thank you for the question. We did explore that. I'm glad you brought it up. We I think that from the the circulation standpoint, we're we're going to have a window there likely for ventilation or just for like opening it up to the street, but ordering will take place inside. We're not looking at using that as a functional like walk up window per se.
Okay. Um, okay, let's see. On the red cedar siding, are you intending to finish that in any way or will you leave it to weather? What's what's your intention?
I think that warrants some more discussion with the owner on what what end goal would be, but I think that we were intending to let it weather.
Okay, these are the kind of questions that come up in design review and so I would appreciate being prepared for these kind of questions. What color is the metal roof?
It's a dark red.
Dark red. Thank you.
Dark red.
Okay. Thanks. Can garbage trucks collect if the ADA space, if the ADA space is occupied?
Trash collection will be brought to the street.
Okay. How did you measure the building height, the maximum building height?
That was done in accordance with the the zoning ordinances specifications. Eric can speak to that a little bit more. We had a whole diagram from the submission for that. Eric?
Yeah, since we used a, since it was a sloping site, we use the definition as defined in the Mancunina zone code of average grade plane. And we on each side of the building selected the midpoint and took the elevation at that midpoint, added those up and then divided by four and that gives you your average grade plane. And that's basically per the IBC. But we used your definition.
Okay, great. Thank you. I appreciate that. Um, is there any screening on the rear lot line to hide the back of the building from the residents who are they're they're building new homes right behind there. And what what is our, I didn't notice a fence. Are you putting a fence back there or is it just tree planting that'll eventually get full?
Yeah, it's a good question. We're the owner is talking to the owner of that lot as well about putting up a fence. So whether or not they they put it up or we put it up, there will be a fence to screen the the two different uses. And that would be within the the height and limitations that are stipulated in the code.
Okay, so I'm gonna write myself a note. Sorry. Okay, um. I had a question about one, the plans and unfortunately, my desk isn't big enough to open the plans here. But on one of the elevations where it identifies what materials are going to be used, it shows that it looks like you've got some kind of glass. I don't want to call it fencing, but glass with some metal trim that is for, I guess, to keep people from falling down the stairs or off the roof or whatever. But in other places, that material is identified as some kind of aluminum. And I'm I'm I don't under, maybe I can't read your plans.
Yeah, I can explain that. I think what you're seeing is it's it's intended, it is a glass railing system, but it will have a like aluminum cap on it as a part of the way it's constructed to hold it together. So you, I think that's the probably clarification is that that could be that the tag showing the material is just slightly showing that railing on the top of the railing instead of the the glass portion.
Okay, so it's glass with a aluminum cap and is that black?
That would be to match the the building standard, like darker gray and black color. So it's like a charcoal.
Let's write that note down. And it looks like I I think in in your summary and forgive me that I don't have the exact words in front of me, but it talked about you may use some unique glass. It looks like some kind of stained glass in into the apartment areas is will you or won't you? And will they look substantially like what's in the drawing?
Um, yeah, we're we're working with the glass artist on that and what it will appear as. And we could submit that as a part of like the signage package if it needed to be. It's not fully developed yet, but it's intended to be a decorative glass element such as stained glass. That would either be a geometric design or depict like a local coastal scene or plants like a Mancunia tree, for instance.
Okay. Okay, and will those be illuminated in any way?
They will be translucent. So they will be, it'll vary in terms of the illumination with if someone is inside of the unit, there may be some glow from inside as you would have with any window. But they are a translucent element between the indoor space and the outdoor space.
Okay. And I don't see where any of your signage is going to be located. And what materials and how does how any signage is going to be illuminated?
We were to submit those as a separate signage permit. We did not outline where those are in submissions.
In our standard, it requests location, size and method of illuminating signs.
Um, we can we can follow up with you on that or note it. The front side of the we would be envisioning some kind of like blade sign mounted to the building or adjacent to the that the small little eyebrow overhand at the windows there. But we don't have that included in the submission at this time. It was our understanding that could be a part of the signage package that was submitted for the science permit.
Well, I know they need to be submitted for the sign permit, but they also, it's one of the things that we require in a in a site design review package. Let me think. One other question on the landscaping. I noticed that there's only one vine maple that's visible from Lenita on the property and everything else is below grade and on the sides. I didn't see any landscaping or even potted plants on anywhere other than that. That looks like that one tree is the only planting that's going to be visible and most of the planting needs to be in the front of the property on the street facing side. So how are you accommodating that?
If I'll share my screen, I think that may be a bit easier to show. So on the landscape planting plan that's attached, the lower quiet area has, that's the vine maple that you mentioned. This area here is provided as landscaping as well, which would be ferns and other ground cover. There is a smaller area down here as well that would be it's daylight a little bit by the stair that's overhead, but it would be also visible. And that's our infiltration plan for the site. You are correct that there is more trees that are back here that are also screening it, not just from the 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 street side, but we've got those some other trees down here. So they're they do fill out the site and we did look at it from all sides and understand the views from other properties as well. But the the moment here is is very pedestrian focused and it does have the landscaping in this corner and along here, but we're raising the the side yards and the front yards to to reach the minimums that we need to satisfy the zone income.
And if you stay on that picture, I'm right where you are that I'm drawing, there's, it looks like a gate in the upper left corner goes into that side yard. Is that is that a gate? Looks like there's a little opening there. So there's a, that's that's fenced across there.
It is. Yeah, there would be a fence here with access to get to the back area.
Okay, and so that makes that landscaping not visible from the street level. Is that correct?
Likely it would be less visible. It is lower ground cover here anyway, but you would see some of the trees when you look back, especially if you're across the street and you can get the perspective. So they won't be entirely invisible, but it is, you know, it's it's five feet from the neighboring lot line. So it's a it's a smaller kind of path. The focus is really going to be on this front courtyard sequence.
And what is the material along that? And what is the material along that um side? That that a walkway to get access to one of the rental units?
No, it's um it's ground cover and landscaping. Um, and then this will be partition, we're going to have some um like downspouts on this side. Um, so this would be fenced off on closer to the unit side in order to create a more of a private pocket. But it's not um, it's not shown to be more than that.
Okay. Okay, um, I think that's all of my questions. Um, on that, I think. Anybody else?
Yeah, I want to go back to uh Karen's question about the gate, uh, what's the purpose of the gate? Are you trying to keep people from walking back there or?
Uh, yeah, it would be for maintenance access, there's really no function back there. So it's the gate would be just a, so that we're not fully blocking it off. There is a an existing power pole on at that corner where the gate is, there's a guy wire that goes back. We'll need to have um some kind of maintenance access to get back there occasionally. And the goal is to keep people from the units wandering out into that area too, where there's no specific function.
Do you have any other questions, Steve?
I do, thank you, Karen. Um. Your uh ADA hotel room is on, how do they have access to that?
Um, it's through that courtyard space.
What about they park in the back, how they get up to their room?
Um, it's also through that, um, it would connect through there. So we we've studied the grades to ensure that there would be an accessible route to go from that parking space up to the unit.
So the grade ADA approved?
Yeah, it would be compliant with the ADA standard.
Now, your uh your area for where your amenities are, your game room, whatever you call it, are you going to serve food and drink there?
Um, yeah, it would be like smaller bites or snacks or um, we're looking at like a yeah, it would, it wouldn't be like hard alcohol or anything like that, it would be, it's intended to be like kind of as a way to showcase more like the steeplejack beer as well, but not in like a really beer focused way. It's really intended to do, just be like, there's maybe um one thing on draft and not um a lot of like beer service necessarily.
So the amusement they gain, what kind of games you're looking at?
You have a favorite?
Yeah.
You're a backend guy? Um, we we have it, I mean, it it is looking at video game arcade type of style, like traditional games, there are classic games and like some pinball machines, but it's not um. We haven't picked the exact ones yet.
So would this attract youth and you're going to be serving beer there, is that, can we do that?
Um, yes, you can, I mean, I I can, it it is allowed, yes.
I personally don't know, I, that's a question, yeah, then uh who you, will you be attr- uh attracting with your?
No, and we're we're, the goal is for families, I mean, I I want to clarify that, I know that we're we're talking about specific things, but like the vision is for a place for families together. Um, and it's not, it's not intended to be um, you know, a big drinking spot or nightlife spot like that. It's really intended to be a family oriented space.
Yeah, I'm kind of with uh Karen on that upper deck with all the seating you have up there. If you're not going to have, would you serve food up there and and people can, are you going to be serving people up there? I want so the attraction of it. And uh I don't know if I got an answer, whether it's open to the public or it's all private on that upper deck or?
Um, it would, it's not intended to be a public park, um, it would be intended for the use of the um, the business on site. So that we don't have um servers planned in terms of like the kitchen operation or anything like that, there's not that sort of um. Uh, frankly, there's not that much space for that sort of service to to be functional. So it it would be more of a takeout sort of thing, or like a to-go sort of items. Um, but to-go meaning it would stay on site, would be managed and observed, but it would, and again, like it's, as we know, like tourism and hours of operation and the amount of people on site could vary greatly from season to season. Um, so the intent is to keep it more um as a seasonal option to expand to um if things are going really great and the weather's really nice.
Well, that brings up about the hotel, I mean, you're you're going to have service people there for the hotel, how are you going to maintain the hotel and reservations and um cleaning and uh you providing spaces for cleaners to come to attend to your rooms?
Um, we do have space allocated for um on the ground floor um for a washer and dryer for handling linens within the units. Um, service would be there to clean out rooms, et cetera. Um, and that would be managed um through an offsite manager.
Yeah, um. It's very limited parking back there, so you have supplies coming and you got uh customers there, your customers up front, there'd be street parking and it's always an issue here in Manzanita, at any city, you know, where the car is going to go. And we're very limited and uh that's our concern. So you had, you have to service the rooms, uh, are you hiring a cleaning company to service the rooms, are you going to do that?
Um, yeah, I, a cleaning company has some kind of be used to service them. Um, the, I would say that the, when the rooms are being cleaned, it's going to be, you know, between guests. Um, so from that time period, like there's, there really should be an uh a vacant parking space for those people to utilize to clean. Um, and just to go back, we we are meeting the minimum requirements that are are there for that parking for the the units. Um, I do think that and believe that with the um, the sequencing of of reservations and with um the the clean periods that would be um available for them and people should not be parking there, that space would be adequate for a cleaning crew to come in and use that.
Um, I I do want to stay on the parking for a minute because you haven't met the minimum requirements. And that they're sharing spaces. Um, i- is that correct, Walt? We should have five um parking spaces, uh, one for each unit and then two for the um hotel management?
Right, it comes out to, I think, like three point two five spaces, you round it down based on the code requirement. And then there is two for what's called the office manager. Now, it doesn't go beyond that, so I think a reasonable interpretation is five spaces.
And how do you, how will you supply the other two spaces?
So, yeah, the wording in the code um that we we were interpreting was, it says managers unit, that requires two spaces for a manager's unit. Um, and there wasn't a specific space allocated for like a a live-in hotel manager on site. Um, it wasn't listed as a requirement either. So we, we did not realize that uh extra two spaces would be required um until the stock report came out. Um, so we're, we're looking at that to see if there is um something that we can come to have an agreement to find a place within the 500 feet. But it wasn't our understanding that that would have um been a requirement that was triggered. Um, it wasn't intended as any kind of oversight, we just didn't realize that this would be something that might be provided as a requirement.
Um, okay, and I, I'm working, Steve. Um, with the
Karen, you're cutting out again, could you kind of go through that?
Sorry, yeah. Can you hear me now? Oh, shoot, you're all frozen.
Hey Karen, this is Scott, Karen, this is Scott, if you can hear me. If you turn your video off, if you turn your video off, well, at least we should be able to hear you.
Um, sure, I can do that.
There, see if that helps.
Yeah, hopefully that's better, thank you, um, Scott. Um, I I I hope you're familiar with the short-term rental requirements that you can only have a, a, an owner can only have an interest in one short-term rental property in Manzanita. And you have three, and it, I know you're calling this a hotel and you're going to meet all of the hotel requirements. But if you can't, for example, you know, have a space for an owner or a cleaning crew, um, then they become short-term rentals. And I just wanted to be clear at this point that two of them would be unoccupiable. So, I mean, that's, that's a comment, not a question. Um, okay, uh, Steve, did you get through all of your questions?
Uh, I was, yeah, I had one more about that, we got that water, high water problem just to the south of them. And are they going to be regarded geotech for there for um development, development?
Who, these guys or the next door neighbors?
Well, I remember when the Frank, they wanted to have a a uh hotel with a, with a basement, I guess, and it, and it couldn't do it because of water problem. I know, I want to make sure that their water is not going to affect the people to the south.
Um, I, the question is, um, will the management of our water on site affect the people on the neighboring property, is that it?
Yeah, is it the soil, will it percolate all the water that you're going to accumulate on site there?
Got it, um, well, we, we've worked um with a civil engineer pretty diligently to find a way to manage all the stormwater on site. So the the systems are all designed um and slightly overdesigned to handle that, the basins on site um for the the drainage and the infiltration within the site. Um. And did that answer the question?
I don't know if it does, actually. Um, all I know is there is a problem with water just south of you and I will just want to be certain that what you do is not going to affect them. But I guess just be aware that
Okay, well, we'll take that back to the engineer and talk to them about it as well. But I I do know that they've, they've worked to mitigate against any sort of um spill over on other sites.
Okay, anything else, Steve?
I'm good.
Okay, uh, Bert, it looks like you have a hand raised.
Yes, um, and I would like to know if the has an independent um say expert looked at the plan for disposal of the watering, water on site? And uh can they um assure us that the system will be designed, that the system as designed will do the job? I guess that's the uh, it will, will not result in uh water running into the properties to the south and lower than this uh, than this property.
Um, so the question is if about an independent consultant, if they have been consulted?
Yeah, I, it's really more of a question, I guess, for this, to the city, if uh if they can verify that the plan will actually do the job.
I can probably respond to that a little bit. Um. Bear in mind, we have sufficient information at this point that we believe stormwater can be accommodated. When they go through, if this is approved and they go through their um building and engineering plans, that will be reviewed by the city engineer at that time. If the city engineer finds that their plans are insufficient and cannot meet the requirements, uh, simply put, they don't build the building. And that's, and that's where the independent, if you will, review comes in. The city engineer has to verify that this particular proposal does meet with the city requirements.
But the uh the design review section clearly states that the planning commission cannot approve a design that doesn't meet the code requirements of the city. So um, it puts us in the position of approving a, perhaps, a design and then having it uh disapproved later by somebody else, by the, by the city for some other reason.
It, Walt, I'm gonna, I'm gonna speak up on this one. So Bert, they've met the requirements that have been laid out by the city for years as far as the amount of retention required uh for impervious surface, their engineers provided the documentation, they pro- uh provided the drawings, I believe page C nine dot zero zero A. It, it is something that I think they've taken more steps than needed um to address this with the impervious surface. And like Walt was saying, at the time they submit, we can have our, the city engineer review to verify that it in, it in fact is going to take care of that. Uh, they do provide overflow, so if their uh containment system does reach capacity, it's going to pump up to the catch basin up at the top of the the property to dispose of any overflow water. So it it prevents it from, from washing into the neighboring properties. The other aspect of this is that they do have the retention, their catchment facilities in the, in, if you look at the notation, let me look at the number here. Um. On page C nine dot zero zero A, it says infiltration facility protection area, do not compact native soils at facility subgrade elevation. And that's to ensure that any water that is caught in there is able to infiltrate into the ground surface as intended. So I, I hope that clarifies it a little bit a- as far as on our aspect of it.
As long as the requirements of the uh, of the uh code are met, they're the uh ninety-five dash four met with regard to uh approving the design goes, I believe that's
Okay.
Reasonable.
All right, thanks.
Did you have other questions, Bert?
Yeah, I'm concerned about the uh two extra parking spaces that need to be provided according to the uh the code and um and when that will be accomplished and um I suppose that if it's not already in, in Walt's um conditions of approval, that we better be sure to put it in there that that two extra parking places can be, that the, that the approve, that our approval of the design is based on those parking places actually being provided by some certain date. I think that's, I think that's all I have.
Um, actually, condition C notes that uh prior to receiving a building permit, the developer shall submit evidence of a shared access and parking agreement that includes adjacent property to the east. In addition, the developer shall provide evidence of two additional offsite parking spaces in compliance with provisions of ordinance ninety-five dash four.
Okay, that should do it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Karen?
Yep.
I have a question on the ADA parking. We got two separate independent lots, it's one tax lot, but it's two separate independent lots, two separate businesses. One is going to be a restaurant and one is going to be a mixed use, a hotel with an arcade. Now, when I look at the requirement for um for the part, for ADA parking on uh, one, one point nine oh, one point zero nine zero subsection two, it talks about one ADA parking is allowed under those circumstances, but we got two lots with two separate companies, two separate businesses. I'm wondering, do they need, are they going to be required for two? I'm wondering, do they need, are they going to be required for two ADA parking lots? One for each business plus the parking for the hotels?
Um, Walt, you want to address that?
Yes, thank you. Um, this was a very confusing issue and Steve, I'm, I'm kind of with you on that. The code just talks about if you're up to five thousand square feet in area for commercial uses, parking is not required. So for the, again, I don't want to get into the next case, but I'll just say for the commercial uses on those two lots, there is no parking requirement. I went through the code though, it, it talks about one ADA van space based on building code requirements. So what do you do? Do you provide one for each business? Do you provide one for some sort of reasonable interpretation of the, uh, parking? So I looked through, what if each of these businesses were standalone on, say, a commercial shopping center or whatever? And I calculated that they only require a total of nineteen parking spaces overall. And that's in, in the staff report. Um, with the ADA requirements, one to twenty-five, um, you're only required one van space. And so, um, that could be suffi- that, that would cover the parking for both entities. And in fact, it does raise the question, if there is no parking requirement, that certainly falls below the one to twenty-five requirement that's in the building code. So I think a, a second interpretation could be that no ADA parking is required. Um, but I think this was a reasonable way to accommodate it. It recognizes that the hotel is going to be using the spaces and the retail uses are not required to have any parking whatsoever. So they really fall into zero ca- category. So in effect, the parking is really designed to accommodate the hotel.
Well, that, that's interesting, Walt, because you know, that says for, for five thousand square foot lot, you got two five thousand square foot lots. And I read that, that each one has to comply independently. Now, if you want to combine the two lots into a ten thousand square foot lot, then, 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 uh, four point oh nine oh subject C doesn't apply.
Well, right now, if, if there was no hotel involved, take lot number three next door, and I don't want to bleed into that application any further than necessary. But they would not require any parking, zero parking. And then the question is, what is the ADA requirement? ADA requirement doesn't come into play until you require at least one parking space. They require zero spaces. And so the ADA is really limited to the hotel. They're the only ones who have required parking, which calculate it out to five spaces. And so they are required to have at least one ADA, and in this case, an ADA van space. So that is included, but they need to have two additional spaces within five hundred feet of the subject property. So any commercial activity, independent lots, no parking is required. It's zero requirement. And, uh, the only parking that's necessary is for the hotel.
Well, I, what confuses me is this, it says that no parking will be required except for the ADA re- uh, parking spot. No park, that required by the American Disability Act.
And we went ahead and we contacted Northwest, Northwest Code Professionals. And they looked at the building code requirements in the staff report. And the requirements for one to twenty-five is one ADA van space. Um, and there is zero parking requirement for any commercial activity on either lot. It comes down to what is the parking required for the hotel? And that comes down to five spaces. And one of those spaces has to be an ADA van space, which they provided, and they need two more spaces offsite.
Okay, I got you. Thank you, Walt.
Okay, okay. In fact, thank you for asking that question. Reminds me of the story of the professor after being asked the same question four times and responding, finally understood it. So thank you, Steve.
Okay, um, I haven't heard from Phil or John yet. Do either of you have questions? Or Bert, let me ask you, did we finish? Did we get through the?
Yes, I finished with my questions.
Okay, thanks. John or Phil?
Uh, I don't have anything else at this point, uh, other than the concern about the parking issue, uh, and, uh, that's going to be a tough one to meet, so we'll see how that turns out.
What about you, Phil?
Uh, I do have some questions, Karen. Um, if the properties are sold either to one individual investor or two investors, does the easement for the parking pass with the sale?
Um, it would have to for the, that to maintain its, um, the, the parking requirements are a requirement, so yes, it would have to.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm just, that's, that's what I'm concerned about. Okay, uh, I noticed that the, the alley or the common of ingress, egress to the property is ten feet wide. Was this checked with any of the services that are potentially going to be required at this site? Like ambulance, garbage, delivery, et cetera?
Um, sorry, I, I heard ambulance. What were the other two?
Garbage and, uh, delivery of provisions.
Um, yes, the, the delivery provisions is fine. The, um, we had a pre-app and I don't recall if the, I don't think the fire department's able to attend. Um, so I, we don't know about, um, if there isn't an extra requirement for the ambulance access. Eric, maybe you could speak to that in a second if you can think of one. But, um, we, um, our discussion with other utility services such as garbage was that they would be brought to the street for the garbage trucks to pick up. And then for propane, we did go through an extensive kind of conversation with them, several phone calls to make sure that the propane tanks could be filled, um, for the, um, I'm sorry, I'm jumping to the next lot too, but for the, the restaurant portion.
Well, I'm, I'm assuming that they're not going to drive down that common ingress, egress, they're going to, they're going to re- uh, fill the, uh, propane tanks through the use of a hose and, uh, am I to assume that the refuse containers are going to be the small ones that are going to be on wheels and wheeled out to the, uh, to the sidewalk area? Is that? Am I right in that? Okay. Uh, are the refuse containers for the lot four stored on, in the lot three area? Cause I didn't see a spot for, for corralling refuse, et cetera.
Um, one, one second. The intent was to keep it onsite, um, on that same site. So if there is not something clearly labeled on the plans, um, we can note that that would be, um, a requirement as well.
So I, to, to understand you correctly, I'm assuming then that, uh, provision for the reference containers will be on lot four?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Uh, on drawing A two ten A, can you tell me what type of cooking equipment is going to be provided in room R zero zero one?
Oh, retail zero zero one. Um, there won't be any, um, cooking elements. Um, currently, it's, it's planned to be like a soft serve machine or something similar. So nothing that would be like hot cooking, no re要在or any other requirements like that.
Okay, so then there will not be any, uh, any, uh, exterior mechanical equipment located on the, uh, on the outside of the building, is that correct?
Um, nothing that would, um, at the street level, any mechanical comment that we have would be to, we'd be pulling it back and trying to hide it away from the street.
Okay, thank you. Uh, drawing A two eleven A, uh, the roof deck material of area one hundred, what is used under the composite wood decking to waterproof that?
Um, Eric, you were just detailing this a little bit. Do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, we're doing a TPO roof. And above that, we will have, um, uh, uh, I'm sorry, PT sleepers, and then we'll have our decking on top of that. Which is a.
Okay, so, so you're going to have a waterproof membrane, then you're going to have sleepers, and then you're going to have the deck material. Okay. Uh, while we're on this particular area, uh, has there been a determination as to how many occupants can be on that area?
It'll be less than fifty, so it'll be forty-nine max.
Forty-nine max?
On the roof deck.
Uh, well, two things concern me, uh, one is noise and, uh, two is uh, if a fire breaks out in the lower portion of the building, you've only got one way to get down off of that deck area, and that's that outside stair.
Yeah, so per the OSSC, um, you are allowed one exit with under forty-nine.
Well, I'm kind of envisioning, envisioning this catastrophe happening at night. And you've got forty-nine people who are trying to go down a stair with, uh, just a couple of lights. Uh, showing the, the way down the steps. Okay, um, I guess that's it. Thank you.
Okay, uh, anybody else from the commission have comments or questions? Um, let me check my procedure here. Let me make sure we get, get everything in properly. I believe, um, at this point, we open it to, um, persons in the audience who wish to speak in favor of the proposed development.
Okay, Karen, at this time, I have one hand up. It's Matt Gray, and I'm not sure if he's in favor of or opposed to, but I'll unmute him and, and let us, let, he can let us know.
Thanks.
Okay, Matt, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Hello all, thank you for being here. Um, as I stated in the introductions, I'm one of four co-owners of the property immediately west toward the ocean uh, from this site. Uh, I have two things. One, um, we've talked about the dealing with the water catchment, stormwater, et cetera. Um, just want to make certain that you're aware, the water table is at four feet right there. Ten years ago, when we rehabbed our commercial property next door, more commonly known as Finisterre, we ran into water at four feet, maybe a little under four feet when we did the required super, you know, tsunami safe signage. And then also just, just really thinking a lot about that, that gated side space, which is immediately adjacent to us, um, along our fence. Those are my questions for the time being.
All right, thanks, Matt.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I, I do not have any other hands raised.
Okay, um, then we should.
A correction, Donna Miller just raised her hand. Uh, do you want to take in favor of or opposed, or do you just want to take all the comments right now?
Um, well, it's, doesn't sound like there's a herd of people. So yeah, I think we could, um, we could just take any, any comments that people have. But you do limit yourselves to three minutes, please.
Yep, I'm, I'm timing it for you. Okay, uh, Donna, you're next.
Okay, I, I just wanted to comment on the parking. Um, I know that's something that they're going to have to address to provide some more spaces. But what I'm also concerned about is if there's not a space for the people that are coming to clean the places, et cetera. If you look at where Sunset Vacation Rentals is, which is now Vacasa, that sidewalk is constantly blocked by cars of cleaners or people running in and they park on the sidewalk because the whole driveway is blocked. So I just want to make sure that we're really looking at parking as, before anything's okay. That's it. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Donna. And it looks like that's all the hands I had raised, Karen.
Okay, um, I'm going to give thirty, thirty more seconds to people who want to comment. To make sure we get everybody. And while we're waiting for that, um, Scott, have we received any, um, letters?
Uh, Karen, no, I have not received any, any emails or letters.
Okay. Okay.
It's, it looks like that's all the hands. I have no more hands raised.
Okay, great, thank you. Uh, any, um, applicant want to, uh, respond to any of the points that were made?
Um, yeah, I guess first marketing, or sorry, Matt, right? Was it Matt Gray? I apologize. I'll, I'll check his name, make sure I got.
Yeah, it was Matt.
I, I apologize. Um, Matt, thank you for, you know, the, the comment about the water table, um, is uh, definitely something we're well aware of. You know, we, we did a study the soils and talked to our civil and landscape, um, designers about this a lot to make sure that we're picking things that are and designing the building, um, based around that, that water table and understand what it would mean. So we've been well aware of that. Um, and I do, I do appreciate you mentioning it though, recognizing that it is a challenge of these sites that are a little bit lower. Um, and then what's happening at the, the property next door, you know, the, the space between? I mean, I think that there was a couple of questions about that too, and we understand that you have, uh, you know, power service as well that's coming from that power pole, um, and understanding how, how that we can, um, um, really navigate and make sure that that's accessible for, for the utility company and for you guys if, if there were ever anybody to get back there. Um, and that's something that the owner will be up to a conversation about, you know, down the road too, as, as, um, business goes on and, um, things move forward. And then, yeah, I think, um,
Yeah, please, go ahead.
Um, sorry, I think I cut you off.
Uh, no, I was just saying, please continue.
Okay, um, yep, and then we'll, again, the, the parking, we'll, we'll make sure and we'll review the, the processes that'll be in place for that to, um, mitigate against any sort of like blocking sidewalks that shouldn't be occurring, um, in order to maintain that public right-of-way area, um, keep it free from vehicles to be where they, they should be and where they, not where they shouldn't be.
Okay. Okay, um, I'm going to close the public comment portion of the discussion. And at this time, yep.
I, Matt, uh, raise your hand one more time before you close it. I'm gonna, go ahead and let him unmute.
Thank you.
You should be able to unmute.
Thank you all. And, and Bob and Eric, I know, have you ever met a town of seven hundred people who is so engaged with these things? Just one note, carry back to the owner developers, it would have been nice if they were part of this.
Um, Brody, yeah, one of the developers, sorry, I know that these meetings are planned, and one of the developers, um, he is actually on an airplane right now, so he was unable to attend, and he is apologetic for not being able to be here. Brody, um, is on the call, he is owner representative as well, and he's one of the owners of, of Steeplejack, um.
Okay, thank you. Thank, thank you for the clarification.
Yep.
Okay, Karen, that looks like we have no more hands raised now.
Okay, thank you. I, I'm glad that you've caught me there, Scott. Um, okay, I am now going to close the pu- public comment portion of this discussion and will invite discussion by the commission. Commission members may ask questions of the applicant, audience members or staff, but we are now to the point where discussion will be limited primarily to commission members. With that, um, I, we are getting close to six o'clock already. And we've got another hearing to do today. Um, so I want to, um, Um, so I want to um. Make a suggestion that um. In my opinion, there were several elements that should have been part of this um, package. Um, and I am wondering if we should consider continuing, I hate to do this to you guys, but continuing. This um, hearing um, to a date certain, so that you can respond to some of the questions. That were where you're still in discussion with the owner about things. Um, so that when. We have a an approval to give, we know exactly what we're looking at. Um, you know, design review is pretty specific. We're looking at. Um, the way the building looks and feels, and if we don't have a full picture of the way the building looks and feels. There, we have to add too many conditions to the approval. For example, um, fencing in the back, you know, um, signage, where the signage is located, how it's gonna be illuminated. You know, all of those kind of things. You don't have to have the specific name on what things are going to say on the sign, but tell us where they're gonna be. Tell us how it's gonna look in front of the building. Um, and and show us where the screening is and that kind of stuff. So I'm I'm gonna suggest that, and other commission members may um, may wanna. Further this um, conversation, but I I hope um, that you. Have enough direction from us to come back and say, give us a finished product. Any objection to that?
Um, can I speak to that really quick? I would like to point out that on um, our architectural site plan sheet, A one hundred, A one. Hey, one point zero zero A, we do note that there is a six-foot-tall um, horizontal cedar privacy fence located at the back of the lot.
Thank you. I didn't see that.
Hmm, um, and I I would um. I would hate to postpone it just strictly for that signage portion. I mean, we, I I think that that is, if there are other comments that are outstanding, we can talk about those as well.
I'm, my screen is frozen. Yeah, um, there's also an issue of two more parking spaces. And it doesn't um, seem right that we should condition your approval on that. It seems that we should be able to. Um, have all that information at the time we make an approval. That's that's my opinion. Anybody else, please feel just free to speak up if if you want to have. One of my um, mentors told me that if we have too many conditions to an approval. That what we have is an incomplete package. And I'm just, I want to just check in with the commission and see, do we have too many commission, too many conditions to approve this? And if we, if we do, then we may need more information. If you're willing to have a lot of um, conditions of approval, then. Please speak up and let's let's move forward. Uh, go ahead, John.
Uh, I agree with you, Karen. Uh, the uh, it is a little bit vague at this point, uh, and I'm really concerned about that parking because uh. I can only think of one place you're gonna get those other two spots, uh, which is the building uh, to the west of you. And another concern is, we don't have an owner present uh, for this project. So some of the answers are a little vague, and they can't help but being vague, because only the owner owner could answer them. So if we continue this uh, meeting, it would be a great idea to have an owner present at the uh, at the next hearing.
Uh, hey, guys, I I don't know if I'm still on mute, but this is Brody Day. I'm co-owner, and I've I've been here the whole time. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions. I want to make sure I'm following the right decorum of 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 the meeting and respectful of the process. Um, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you guys have, and and so, so I just want to let you know I'm I'm here and I'm I'm fully engaged in the meeting, so.
Well, one question I, one question I've got is, have there been any discussions uh, with any adjacent businesses about the parking situation? About getting the other two spaces?
Uh, John, quite candidly, we just learned about this parking issue just just a couple of weeks ago, so. Uh, we're we're navigating that, and uh, we're understanding the code, but uh, this this totally caught us off guard. And in our interpretation, excuse me, of uh, of of the code, this this was, this caught us completely off guard. So um, so we we've just started these discussions, and we wanted to proceed with this hearing to to understand what other concerns there are. Um, you know, I I heard some some signage questions, water remediation, all of the work that we've put into the development of this site in collaboration with. You know, feedback from the community and and just wanting to do something really cool and and neat for the Manzanita community. Um, has went into this, uh, and so, uh, I understand the the serious concerns that uh. That some of the uh, committee members have regarding the parking, but uh, we do too. So we we just learned about this uh, the this, and 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 we're navigating that. So. But if there's other questions aside from the parking, um, I'm I'm happy to, happy to answer those. Um, you know, whether it's stained glass, whether it's, you know, letting the cedar uh, naturally weather, uh, water remediation, landscape planning. Uh, if there's things that that you guys feel strongly about seeing, like more lighting on Egress Pathing, we're happy to do that, so. Um, we want this to be a collaborative effort, but uh, without knowing exactly what you guys are asking of us, uh, it's it's challenging.
Karen, I have a question to think about the hotel and the short-term rental. Did we get that resolved? Do we know what's what they are doing here and how the hotel is going to be operated?
Um, from what I understand, the um, owner has to comply with uh. The Oregon State and Tillamook County requirements for a hotel. Um, and if they can't do that, then. There isn't much that we can do with that property, so, and and I'll, to tell you the truth, I'm I'm very concerned that for. Most of this project, that, um, you know, all, most of the drawings, it's shown as Airbnb. Which means short-term rental, and it sounds like you may have heard that we had problems with another hotel property. And um, and. Uh, I I I shouldn't describe. Your thought process, but um, to to call it a hotel instead of short-term rentals. This is, my feeling is that people are constantly trying to get around the short-term rental regulations by calling it something else. And I'm not sure that that's fair to the citizens of Manzanita to do. Um, so Walt has said that one of the conditions is that you have to comply with all of the requirements for a hotel. Um, we have no way of knowing that you've complied with those requirements and will continue to comply with those requirements because. We don't ever see your correspondence with Tillamook County. And tha- that's a major concern that I have, that that what you're really doing is an Airbnb, and um, we have. Um, you know, there's an ownership problem that you're gonna run into, that you should be aware of if you're not already. Um, if you can't operate it as a hotel, or for some reason you stop, then um, then you've got a, you've got a problem on your hands. And I just want to make sure that you're aware of that. Um, so yeah, I I mean, the the only requirement that we can give in a, in our um, commercial review and is. Design review is to say that you comply with all the regulations. There's no way for us to check to see whether you have.
Karen, if I could just jump in real quick, that was actually a condition that I insisted be included in the findings. And I will say that the county uh, is excellent at ensuring that businesses that are. Permitted through their agencies are in compliance, um, and we're actually in pretty frequent contact, um, I am personally with. Uh, Jamie Craig, who heads up that program, so I don't want to, I'm not disagreeing with your um, what what you're saying. But I, but I did include that in the findings because um, because the county is, they're on it. And so if they are licensed through the county, um, then the county is 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 on top of that and ensuring that they are meeting those requirements.
Okay, thank you. And does does that help answer your, was that Steve? Was that your question?
Uh, yes, thank you, Karen.
Okay. Okay, um, any further discussion by the commission? Are are, let me ask, put it this way, are you ready to make a decision on this property, on this project?
Karen, let me ask a question here. What do, what do we still have open? The uh, signage and the parking? Was there anything else?
Um, there were some design elements that weren't particularly clear, and since we're doing a design review, they they weren't particularly clear in my mind. Um, you might be satisfied, um, but there were, there were some questions about whether some things would be. Um, included or not included. Let me mute myself for just a second here, sorry. Um. Okay, can you hear me again?
Yeah, I can hear.
Okay, I'm sorry, I had a, had a barking dog problem. All done now. Um, yeah, I think I was saying just there were some design elements that I'm not satisfied with. Um, your mileage may vary, and if you're ready to um, make a decision, um, then. Still have a working dog problem, um, then um, we should pursue um, with determination.
Well, if we're gonna continue it, uh, we we should have some kind of list uh, for these people to uh. To uh, address and then come back with.
Anybody else? Or do you want to put that in the form of a motion?
Uh, Karen, this is Bert. Um, I would make a motion that we continue. The uh, meeting until a future specified date to address the. To be sure that the parking problems, potential parking problems of the plan are. Addressed satisfactorily. And um. And the uh. The stained glass doors uh, are better, more clearly defined in terms of. Uh, color and geometric patterns. And that the um. The, the, how the uh. Cedar siding will be treated or not treated and allowed to weather naturally. I think that's a very important question. In my experience, uh, this is sort of a side, sort of a side note, the um. Cedar, when left exposed in one direction, will weather. In one, in one manner, in another, you know, in a ninety-degree angle, in another direction. Will weather in another manner. And uh, sometimes that isn't highly, you know, you don't get a very desirable effect from that. But it it would be good if the uh. If the uh, applicant could address at least whether or not the. Whether the wood re- would receive any finishing or just be left raw to weather naturally.
And could I add to your list, Bert, that um, there is some effort to describe how. Uh, fifty percent of the landscaping in um. Living plant material is located near the front, uh, across, at the front of the property. Or at at least is visible from Lanita, there's, you know, uh. You know, planter boxes or whatever, whatever is going to be that those be um, uh, shown on the plans and described.
Yeah, I'll second, I'll second that.
Okay. Okay.
Karen, may I just interrupt here briefly? Um, I just want the planning commission to be aware that we are. Day thirty-six of the hundred and twenty day, and continuing it to October would be day fifty-three. So um, I'm not saying it's fatal, but just just bear that in mind as uh, commissioners.
Yeah. Um, okay. Any? Uh, any, I, Bert, you made a motion, is that correct?
Yes.
To continue. Uh, is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, thank you. Um, John, um, any further discussion?
Should we pick a date? Should that be part of the um. Decision at this point?
Let me ask the, the people who know these things, Leila or Walt?
I believe it's October seventeenth um, at four P M.
That is correct.
Does it have to be delayed that long?
You were welcome to meet earlier. I mean, that's, that's a decision the commission uh, can make. Recognizing we only have one meeting a month.
That's the question I'm asking the commission right now.
Uh, I could meet sooner than that. I don't know how staff time. You know, how much, how much they've got going on to to prepare, and how long it's gonna take the applicant to to um, provide new materials.
Well, I'd like to hear from the applicant, and staff can work around, um, whatever is best.
I mean, I I think that some of them could be addressed on the call today, um, with the owner present, but I think that other items that may need a little bit longer is. Going to like, um, I think it would probably be a week of time before we'd be ready to meet again. So we can meet as early as next, probably, well, Eric, what do you think is um, is next week worth? Or two weeks?
We would want at least two. Review.
Staff would definitely need a time to review that, and our reports are required to get in one week prior to a meeting.
Understood.
Yeah, and the third, just so folks know, is there's a, an outreach event happening on the third in the evening, which is two weeks from today. So that would not work for us. It doesn't have to be on a Monday. It could be on a Tuesday. Um, so the applicant would need to provide all the information to staff, if, say, we were to meet on October fourth, we'd need all that. Information um, by the twenty-seventh, well, probably sooner, well, probably the Friday before. So. Because Walt will need time to update that staff report and put it together in time, so. That starts really pushing us into the week of October tenth, which is just a week earlier than the other planning commission meeting, so. When we start having meetings that close together, that does become pretty burdensome for for us and for noticing and for. For that sort of thing. If we are not planning to have a planning commission meeting in October, then having one on the tenth would be. Um, I think doable.
Do we, uh, Scott, do we have um, anything on the agenda for October yet?
Uh, as of now, Karen, I don't have anything on the agenda for October. Let me look at one thing. Yeah, there, I don't have any applications that would actually make it to the October meeting, so we could, we could continue this to October.
Okay. Um.
Why don't we just go ahead and and plan on the seventeenth, since since that's our next meeting?
Uh, okay, the, now, um, we also need to do the second, the hearing on the second piece. Um, shall we continue this meeting for another hour today? I I don't want to get too too many motions confused, but at least that way, um, we'll have it, we'll have a head start on it. So do you want, let me just put it this way, should we do on early, which would be October, what did you say, Leila? The 11th, is that it? Or the 4th?
Well, I think if we're going to have the meeting earlier, my recommendation would be to do it on the 10th. Staff also have to prepare for city council on the 5th, and so that's a big lift for us to do two meetings in one week. So that would be my suggestion, or you just have it on your normal October 17th date, just all of us being cognizant of where we are with the 120 day clock.
Okay, I would leave that to the applicant then. If either.
Also, Karen, one other note, you mentioned about the other case. The only way that we can continue that would be to at least open the next case and make a vote on the continuation. These are two separate applications.
Okay, thanks. Bob, did you want to move, go to the 10th or the 17th? What, do you have a strong preference either way?
I am out of town on the 17th, so Eric from our office may be able to attend and take the take point on that. So 10th, you know, I think that we can make either work. We'll need to, you know, I know that the parking is something that's under consideration here, and I want to talk to Rhodey about that as well, and see if we can drum up some leads on parking.
You don't have a strong preference either way, or?
Don't have a strong preference either way.
Okay, so should we just say our regular meeting on the 17th then, since it's on the schedule and staff is ready for that?
I think that probably is best too, so the public can also just be aware and know that's our typical meeting time.
Okay, okay. Yes, Phil. You're muted, sorry.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
I wanted to ask a question. I don't have too many issues for lot number three. It seems to me that it would be fair to the applicant and to the owner if we could go through lot three, and that way then he knows or they should, they know what they are maybe, may not be required for lot three, so this gets hopefully resolved on the in the next meeting. To postpone a hearing on lot three until the next time runs the risk of not being able to approve lot three because of some technicality.
Yeah, I agree, that's that's a good point. It just means we're we're here for another another hour tonight, but yeah, I agree, I think that's that's the fair thing to do would be to air air the grievances, get them all out, and then hopefully have an approval on that tonight. So I just want to restate, it's been moved and seconded that we continue this hearing to October 17th to for the, so that the applicant can address the list of items that Bert and I, I'm pretty sure the record kept track, the video recording, and Walt, I imagine you probably took notes as well. Okay, so it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, so we'll continue to the 17th. Okay. Do we need a short break? Three minute, five minute break? Or should we just keep going?
I need a break.
Break, okay. We'll be back at 6:02, we'll be back at 6:07.
Okay.
Is everybody back that needs to be back?
There we go.
Okay, are we all back? Scott, are you here?
Yeah, yes, Karen, I'm here.
Okay, good. Just wanted to make sure somebody was in control of this Zoom business. It's 6:08 in the afternoon. And this is the time and place set for the hearing in the matter of a design review application for the east side of 220 Lanita, Lot 3, Lot 14, Manzanita Beach subdivision by Harder Holdings Coastal LLC. Excuse me, the hearing is now open. The decision to deny or approve this request will be based on the design review standards listed in the same sections as before, 4080, 4090, 4.137 through 4.156, and the commercial zone standards in section 3.040 of ordinance 95-4. The spike, specific criteria are summarized in the staff report and will be reviewed at this hearing. All testimony and evidence must be directed toward this approval criteria or other criteria in the zoning ordinance which you believe may apply. Please note in their decision, the planning commission may reject comments or ordinance citations that do not directly apply to the request. Note that an issue which may be the basis for an appeal to Luba must be raised not later than the close of record at or following the final evidentiary hearing of this case. Such issues must include specific statements or evidence that allow the commission and those in attendance an adequate opportunity to respond. This case will proceed with the applicant's presentation, followed by the staff report, followed by those in favor and those opposed to the application. Commission staff and participants may direct questions to those who testified, and finally, the applicant is entitled to a rebuttal. Again, I'm going to request that people avoid repetition. If someone has already expressed your same thoughts, please concur, and then we'll move on. If you send a written response to the proposal, please don't repeat your comments, they're already part of the record. Prior to the conclusion of the first hearing on a land use application, a participant may request an opportunity to present additional evidence or testimony regarding the application. If such a request is made, it's up to the commission to determine if the hearing will be continued to a date and time certain, or if the record be kept open for submission of addition additional evidence or testimony. If the record is kept open, it will be for minimum seven days with a short rebuttal period thereafter afforded to the applicant. In this case, oh dear, I've got bad information in here. Okay. Okay, so we need to first ask the audience if they are any objections to the notice that was sent in this case.
And I do not have any hands raised at this time, Karen.
Okay, and if there are any objections to the jurisdiction of this body to hear and consider this case?
And I still have no hands raised at this time.
Okay, then we should ask if there are any declarations of conflict or bias by any members of this body. I will start with Phil today.
No conflict of interest, no bias, no exporte contact, and I have visited the site.
Okay, thank you. Steve? Oh, I'm sorry, Steve, you're muted.
I've had no contact, not biased, there's no conflict of interest, and I visited the, you know, the location.
Okay, John?
No contact, no bias. What's the other one?
A conflict of interest.
No conflict of interest, and I visited the site.
Okay, how about you, Bert?
I've had, I have no conflict of interest, I have not had any exporte contact, I have no bias, and I have visited the site.
And for my part, I have also visited the site, I have had no exporte contact, I have no conflict of interest, and I have no bias. I guess, are there any members of the audience who want to challenge any member of the commission to hear this based on actual or possible conflict of interest or bias?
Karen, I have no hands raised at this time.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so let us move on to the hearing on the B project, a restaurant on Lot 3, the East property, and would the applicant like to give an overview of this development?
I would, thank you. Property is, this is Lot 3, 220 Lanita Avenue, I'm more familiar with this now. See if I can share my screen again, I'll walk you through it. The project is a restaurant, I want to note, just it was in the the staff report as well, but just want to note for clarity's sake that this is a, the client is Steeplejack Brewing Company. It is a restaurant only, though there is no brewing functions happening onsite. So the, this is the front facing the street from the rendering provided with the with our designer view documents. The approach here, we have forward facing dining on the ground floor, we're trying to really concentrate activity on the street front presence. We have a roof deck up as up above as well. Again, we're focusing the pedestrian oriented, more like commercial friendly uses and like aspects of of the business on the front side with things like kitchen and service in the back. The existing property has two existing structures on the site, which are old residences that are no longer in use, and they will be removed as a part of the project and demolished. It's worth bringing that up for everyone's reference as well. On the site itself, we have a shared access easement for this driveway that comes down here. We have back of house, we are utilizing the existing topography of the site, which is fairly steep, about 10 foot of drop from the northeast core most, or northeastern most corner of the site at the sidewalk, down to the lowest portion in the southwest corner. Using that existing topography, rather than filling the whole thing, we have looked at utilizing that for tucking the, a small storage area underneath with some of the coolers for the the business for the restaurant side. And then again, as if you'll recall, for the the adjacent lot has a shared parking lot easement here for the hotel use. The entrance to the restaurant is again centered and facing the street. We have an egress court in the back for a secondary egress stair upstairs from the roof deck. The actual restaurant itself from here, I'm sure, can everyone see my screen just to make sure we're having some issues? Thank you. The basement is down here with has those utility functions, building access across base. The upstairs and main level, which would be at street level, but slightly up, that we have located the access to the site over here on the northeastern side to enter into the site. We have the dining space with a front facing bar, so there's good activity visible from the street. A fireplace on the interior, restrooms tucked behind, and then the kitchen is located in the back with convenience access outside from there. The idea there would be that traffic from kitchen would not be interrupting diners or going out to the front in order to get down and access anything that may need from just downstairs in storage. The kitchen is planned to have largely like basically designed to minimize trips up and down those stairs out the back that go down into that storage area, and so it's intended to keep it all mostly up here. The upstairs area is roof deck and second story restaurant with tables and chairs up there as well, with the staircase connecting it internally, and a outside egress stair only out the back that connects down to the egress court, bringing you back up to the northeast corner of the site. We do have some plantings up at the front and as well as pedestrian. We do have some plantings up at the front and as well as pedestrian kind of focus, like tables and chairs, and utilizing that setback to create more pedestrian space. There's a can, similar to other businesses on the street as well. That's all I have right now. Eric, did you have any follow-ups for that?
Okay, Walt, would you give us your report, please?
Okay, thank you. This time we're looking at lot 3, which is adjacent to lot 4. Applicant provided a summary of why it's being proposed. I will note for the record, this is also in the C1 zone and restaurants and lounges, et cetera, are definitely allowed within the zone. So this is permitted subject to a design review. Again, the beginning of the commercial zone talks about the minimum sort of development requirements. I'll just briefly run through those. The building does meet the minimum setback requirements with regard to the yards based on building official review, also meets the height limitation. They comply with the landscaping requirements. There are no extensions, roof extensions, et cetera, that violate sidewalk coverings or marquee information. The applicant says note they're using the slope as part of their drainage program. And the floor area ratio here is .618, which does not exceed the .65 requirement. The first thing we need to look at is parking at the site. I'm not going to repeat what we discussed in the last one. Again, note that because the size of the site and its location in the zone, actually the size of the site, there are zero parking requirements for the restaurant. The parking on the site through an easement or agreement is basically for the adjacent hotel. This proposal complies with the need for the site plan review. Note that there will be limited fill to develop the site. There are no parking structures in the front yard. And while there are some trees on the site, they will be removed as part of the development and they will be replaced with additional plantings on the perimeter. With regard to the actual development here, the section 4.150 seeks to determine whether proposal maintains the characteristics of the community. Again, I'd like to note the building size and allow both area comply with our development requirements. The building is also distinctly designed to have interaction between customers and adjacent pedestrians. So in other words, it faces the street and has interaction with the street. All those facilities that are not part of that are really on the lower floor areas such as kitchen, kitchen functions, utilities, et cetera. They're on the backside of the building, not visible by the public along Lanita. This application also is consistent, this application review is consistent with the requirements and also the procedures we are following are consistent with code requirements. The first thing we're looking at in terms of the design, their design criteria is in section 4.155. There are five items under consideration. Similar to the other project is does create a visually interesting project. Again, has the frontage and the sort of look of the development out on the street complies with all the setback requirements of the code, the building. There is an existing natural slope on the building. They work with that slope to create the design. As noted, existing structures will be removed. The site has minimal features such as rocks or vegetation that can't be saved. Additional plantings will occur along the east and south property lines to improve aesthetics and provide screening. Item three is the design relates or integrates proposed landscaping open space to adjacent spaces. Again, the front contains patio, plantings allows outdoor dining during favorable times of the year. This patio and improvements, you know, again, connect the restaurant to the sidewalk and pedestrians. Access is located out the northeast corner of the lot and where the sloping is less steep and makes favorable and easy access to the structure. Item four, design gives attention placement, storage, mechanical equipment. As noted, this would be on the lower floor and behind the frontage of the building along Lanita. Item five, functions and uses are arranged to reflect and harmonize with natural characteristics. Again, they did incorporate the site within the storm drainage, if you will, slope management to incorporate the storm drainage. They are also replacing a lot of, providing new landscaping to replace existing vegetation. Section 1.56 contains criteria for architectural design. Again, I think we find that this is a unique building. I don't think it's a drawing exception from existing structures. Again, the applicant is using vertical red cedar siding. There will be a small metal roof, irrigated metal will not be in the design. And again, like other buildings along Lanita, connects the entrance, if you will, to the public. Regarding landscaping, again, they are using native Oregon plants and also will incorporate that within the drainage system. I noted earlier that to meet the landscaping requirements under item five, they are using grading and contouring of the site to incorporate within their storm drainage system, and they did submit those calculations. Building does have three levels and does create some visual interest. I think of this as also enhanced by the indoor and outdoor seating component. Lighting is non-industrial in design, again, like the adjacent building look mainly in doorways and sidewalks and down-facing. I think overall, this building is comparable, compatible with adjacent structures. And the building does comply with the height limitations and FAR restrictions. I just think in general, this design avoids creating a single monolithic structure by the use of canopy, material changes, eaves, upper story setbacks, and an open patio on the street level. I think on balance, the improvement is consistent with the intent of the design standards. So with that, staff recommends that this application be approved subject to the conditions noted in the staff report. That concludes the report.
Thank you very much. Are there questions from the commissioners to either the applicant or the staff? Go ahead, Bert.
I have a question that is similar to one brought up in the prior hearing about the egress from the, the restaurant, the restaurant areas, I guess, in case of a fire. And I guess the question for the, for the applicant is has have, have capacities been set for these dining areas? And also the, perhaps the roof, the second-story area outside for so that people can get out of the place in case of a fire? I know, I guess there are standards that some, somebody, someplace has established for this. And the question, specific question is have, has this been reviewed by another outside authority to have the, the capacity, the people capacity and the capacity, capacity of the stairways and ramps and other parts of the structure? Are they adequate for the capacity of the building?
So I could speak to that, Bert. We have done all the calculations on the building. On the first floor of the restaurant, we are over 50 occupants. And we require two exits, so we have two exits on the north side. We are fully sprinkled, so there are more than one-third distance apart. On the second floor, again, we have more than 50 occupants. That's including the roof deck. And we have two exits up there, one going down the main stair and out, and then one going out the backs to the exterior stair in the back on the south side. And then that goes to an egress court to the right away. The, the roof deck is 49 occupants and similar to the roof deck. I guess we're just talking about this site, but so if you're under 49 occupants, you can do one exit so that the roof deck has one exit. But as soon as you get into the restaurant itself, then you have two means of egress, and that meets OSSC code.
And who is the authority that that approves those numbers? Is that the state?
That would be reviewed by the city of Manzanita, and I think they're going to go through the code. You have to remind me, Walt, what their name is, but Code Pros, so they'll be reviewing it. But it will all meet the OSSC 2019 code.
The applicant has to be, meet both the building requirements and those are also reviewed by the fire district.
But that hasn't been done yet?
Well.
That, that occurs at permit stage?
Exactly, because again, as you noted, part of the process, there might be modifications to the layout, et cetera. And that's why we require as one of the conditions, they get the building permits that comply with the requirements as well as any fire district standards.
Okay. If, if, if it's found that the building has to undergo some modifications, the plan has to be modified in order to meet these restrictions, that could affect the design appearance of the outside of the building.
Correct. It will come back to you with a modified design. They have to comply with their proposal. If it requires modifications or changes, they will need to resubmit.
Okay, so we are essentially approving what we see on the drawings now with the provision that we can, we will be required to review any changes that change that appearance of the outside of the building.
That is correct, sir.
Additional stairways or ramps or whatever.
That is correct, sir.
Is that the end of your questions, Bert, or did you have more?
That's, that's it for now, yes.
Okay, John, what about you?
Oh, question for Walt on the staff report. Under recommendations and conditions of approval, item C2, install parking improvements consistent with approved building and engineering plans. What's that in reference to, Walt, since we don't need parking on this, in this building?
Oh, there is a parking spaces that are part of the design. In other words, as Bert pointed out, they're providing you a design that includes the parking on this particular site. So that has to conform with engineering requirements that have to do with parking, you know, space width, striping, et cetera.
But the parking is associated with the motel, right?
Oh, absolutely agree. They still have it on their site plan. That is what they're proposing to the planning commission, and that's what they need to show along with submitted engineering plans, that it conforms to their proposal.
Okay, I understand now.
Any other questions, John?
No, that's it right now.
Okay, how about you, Phil? What do you got?
Couple of questions. On sheet A210B, can you explain to me what the floor to ceiling height is for the crawl space?
So it, and Eric may know more of the specific numbers on this one than I do, but the crawl space itself is, it steps up with the slope of the site there. So it is not going to be like carved out fully excavated at all. It's going to be following the step, stepping of the site, so it's not intended to be occupiable space.
Okay, so let, let me approach it a different way. The foundation walls that are going to be poured to enclose the space, are they going down clear down to the grade level that's shown on your section cut? I forget which drawing it is.
I can speak to that, yeah. The walls will be going all the way down and following the grade of going north to south. And the footings will be below, below that grade.
But it. Good, so a tenant in the future could dig that out, is that correct? He could dig out the crawl space and make it a larger space out of it, is that correct?
No, because the footings would be following the grade on the inside because we have.
That's what I was asking. Okay, thank you. Can you tell me what kind of anchorage are you using on the, I'm on the same drawing, 210B, what anchors are you using for the steel posts, 0503? It just shows the post going down there. What, you have a footing, a foundation, what do you have there?
We have spread footings down there. The exact anchorage, I'd have to defer to structural, but it is a spread footing.
Yeah, okay, I don't have the structural, I don't think, so I can't tell. Okay, on sheet A2.12B, red line M through N, 4 through 5, and K through N, 7 through 8, you have two one-hour shafts. Can you tell me what those were about?
Yeah, we have one for the kitchen to support the hood. The other one is a small shaft on the east side. Well, the kitchen shaft was on the south side. The one on the east side is a very small shaft for running plumbing up to the roof, or vents. And then our third shaft is the one, the fireplace, kind of on the north side of the building. And that will be, they'll have propane inserts, and then that will again go up to then.
Okay, thank you. Is the deck construction the same as lot 4?
Yep, exactly the same, yep.
Thank you. I don't see an indication of a dumb waiter to service anything going on in the upper floors. Is there not one included, or are you, service people actually going to walk those trays and plates and stuff upstairs?
Yeah, they'll walk upstairs.
Okay. We've already talked about the color scheme and the tinted windows, color of the trim, color of the roof. I think you just indicated to me that the fuel for the fireplace is propane. Is that an open fireplace or there are glass doors?
Inside or outside? Um, inside or outside?
Uh, really both.
I mean, there, uh, there would be glass doors.
Okay. Uh. Karen, that's it for me.
Okay, um, how about you, Steve? Uh, you're, you, yeah, you're gonna unmute yourself.
Yeah, thank you, Karen. I did a couple of questions, um. You've got three propane tanks down on the ground level, and you got one propane tank on the east side, and. They're going to be serviced from the street, is that how you've been doing that? And how much propane do you anticipate using? How often would you have deliveries for propane?
Uh, it would depend on use, um, and based on the kitchen needs, so that we've already talked to um the. Uh, the, the propane gas vendor about this, um, I'm blanking on the man's, the gentleman's name, but. Um, I know that we, we have had these discussions about frequency of fills and getting that calibrated, but um, it's. Difficult for a restaurant, not atypical.
I imagine, so can you get night deliveries?
Um.
Lanita gets pretty busy, um, I can't imagine propane tanks coming up in the afternoon trying to service your tanks and. That'd be real.
Yeah, I mean, they, they do this for a living, I expect that they, they have a, they probably know the better time to go and fill it up than, than I would on. Right now, but um, I, I know that we did talk about that too, and I did express that concern to the, the vendor about making sure that fills are not interrupting business. For, or pedestrian traffic.
We would hope you'd be able to do that. How many employees do you expect to have?
Uh, Brody, I don't know if you're available to speak right now, um, I, do you have an expectation?
Yeah, a lot of it is going to vary, of course, seasonally, as, as you guys know, uh, we'll have more employees in the summertime than we will. In the, in the winter months, um, and a mixture of part-time employees and full-time employees, but we'd anticipate uh. The neighborhood of ten to thirty employees.
Well, we're having trouble with employees down there for restaurants, I, I wish you luck with that. Um, you have a exhaust fan on the south side of the building. And do you know what the decibel level of that fan is for the neighbor to the south?
Um, if you give me a minute, I can find the cut sheet, um, but uh, you know, our, our intent is operations, and we haven't talked about hours of operation. But we comply with the, um, the curfew and the, the ten PM kind of curfew time for noise that has to be. Less than fifty decibels after that, so hours of operation would be based on kind of conforming to that, so. And the kitchen will not be operational and the fan will not be exhausted at that time. I can, if you give me a minute, I can pull it up if you'd like me to find it.
I'm sure they'd appreciate it. While you're looking at it, uh, Phil asked about dumbwaiter to bring food to the upstairs, how about the beer kegs downstairs in the basement? Bringing it upstairs, how they getting up there?
Um, there is a glycol system down there for the keg, there's a keg cooler, so there's actually a cooler that's dedicated for beer, so there'll be draft lines inside. That go up through the barn to deliver beer, so kegs won't have to be brought up or down stairs, they can use the ramp.
No, that's good. And so delivery for kegs and stuff, are they gonna be coming down the alley, alleyway there to have access to that? How are they gonna get them out to the street?
Yeah, they would ramp it down the alley.
Okay. Yeah, I think I got one more question here, and uh garbage is gonna be a big issue, so restaurant, um. Where are you gonna put your garbage cans for pickup? Where are they gonna be setting?
Um, they'd bring them up to the street from the back, but there'd be during, in the back during like typical business operations, um.
So they placed on the street for pickup?
Um. That would be coordinated with the trash company for the specific location, um, I don't. I don't have that, uh.
No, it's just.
Looking up for a second, hold on.
I'm not sure how the other uh restaurants and business on, that need to place their garbage cans, I, I really don't know, I just kind of work it. You're gonna have several of them. And you talk the fire pits and. I think that's all I have there, uh, Karen.
Okay, um, oh, yeah, go ahead, Phil.
I'm sorry, I, I forgot one question, um. Looking uh at the exterior of the building, the, the elevations, I only saw the one exhaust fan that's. Uh, Steve mentioned, are there any other mechanical pieces, equipment or vents? That uh are not shown on the elevations that you would require for the operation?
Um, there are some, and Eric jumped in if I forget anything, but the. Um, operationally, we have some of the equipment for the building in that crawl space, and there will be some vents on the, um. The west side facing towards that driveway, so there'd be louvered vents that would match the architectural metal on the project. So that darker gray charcoal trim.
Are they large in, are they large in nature?
Um, not substantially so, um, I think they are. Um, I don't have the drawing up in front of me, but I, I believe they're twenty-four inches by maybe three feet or four feet. There's one, I know there's one horizontal one, and then there's um, another one that I believe is twenty-four by twenty-four inches.
What about the two mechanical shafts, or I guess three mechanical shafts that we talked about, do they penetrate the roof line?
Um, the plumbing vents would be like vent to roof style, or it's like a pipe that's exposed, but.
Roof, roof, like a roof jack for a residential?
Um, yeah, I'm not too familiar with the jacks, but that, that would be the case. The one that's more noticeable is the, that, that chimney sort of feature on the front. Um, which will go for the propane, but the others, the other shaft on the, on the south side for the kitchen exhaust is, is going to the south. It's not, it's going sidewalling out, it's not going up through the, the roof.
What determines the uh, the height of the chimney at the roof line?
So.
Is there a code requirement for that?
There, yeah, there is, and we cannot go any higher than the twenty-eight foot six, and it is aligned with the, uh, the ridge of the roof, so it does not go higher than. The max height in the.
But it, does it have to be a certain height? Uh, and a certain distance away from the peak of the roof in order for it to draft properly? Well, I guess you're, you're using propane, so you won't have any smoke anyway.
Exactly to your point, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Um, thanks, Phil. Uh, I just have a couple of questions, um, again. Probably the same questions I have um on the other projects, but um generally speaking, the um color scheme. Um, will match the other buildings, so you'll have the dark red metal roof. Charcoal gray or black metal trim on the doors and handrails and that kind of stuff, is that correct? And the same kind of glass, uh. Um, I don't know what you call them, what the, what the heck do you call them? The, the handrails. They're, they're glass, is they basically the same look and feel as the other building, is that correct?
Uh, correct, I think one clarification, did you say red roof?
Yep.
Um, but, and I apologize if maybe the, the audio cut out previously, but it, it's gray, so that the metals on the project would match, so the roof would match the, the gray as well.
Okay, so yeah, I had heard red.
No, no, so, um, and that's, that's consistent with the rendering that we provided as well, the, the color of the roof, um. The uh, and I, we'll have to remind me, I forget one, but yes, like railings, that the character of the building is consistent, we're, we're. Playing into the village character, trying to reference materials that are local and. Already in the existing downtown area in terms of that, the vertical, or like just the cedar siding, using that wood. Um, the glass railing, um, with that aluminum, um, kind of metal accents and guard on it would be consistent as well.
Okay, and um, there's also potential for, I think you said, maybe some of the stained glass looking. Features on this one?
Not on this one, no.
Okay, on the drawing, um, they appear. Uh, well, I guess that's inside. Never mind, that's.
Yeah, there's, we're, we're hinting at interior decor, but it's not an exterior feature.
Okay, um, and then how much of the living, uh, how much of, how, how many square feet or what percentage? Is living plant material on the street-facing side of the building?
Um, we, let me, I'm pulling up the drawing right now to look. Um. I know that we focused it on the, I don't know if we called out a specific percentage, um, but we did calculate up the total square footage provided. In terms of like the planting areas, um, the front and back, um, and that's shown on L one point zero one B. Um, we have a planting area in the fronts with, um, and then as well as a, there's another vine maple there in the front as well.
Um, yeah, it's interesting because those aren't shown on your um renderings on the front, you know, the um projected. Buildings, so there's no visible plants anywhere. In that, so that's, that, I think that's why I'm confused by this, but um, so essentially there will be a planter box in the front. Of this, um, and that's it for living plant material in the front, is a planter box?
A planter box, yeah, there's a planter box linking um the entry to the, the site, um, I can. Show on the screen, um, so this is the rendering you're mentioning, and you correctly, but the, the, we're not showing that correct.
Dead and dry, no plants.
Correct, and it would be there, it would be there. So here, I can show you on the, the landscape drawing, so the, the, the visual representation didn't show it, but this one. Um, does show it accurately, and that there would be like a, an entry into the site with that vine maple and um a planter box there, or it's a built-in planter.
Okay. And um, what is the material that the patio is made of in the front there?
Um, the patio, I agree, it'd be concrete.
Okay. Uh, okay, and um. I, I'm also a little concerned about the vent out the back, now how far away is the um? Is the vent on the south side of the house from the property line?
Um, I will measure it for you right now.
Because there are homes back there, I know you've mentioned that, you know, everything is screened from Lanita, but. You've got a four-dimensional property, so. Concerned about the people who are gonna be living back there.
Um, it's forty-five feet away from the property line.
Okay, good, thank you. Okay, well, just general comment, well, I'll wait to do my general comments, um. Any other questions from the commissioners?
I do have one question, Karen.
Yep.
The, the driveway coming up from the parking to the street. Is it, there's a level off before it reaches the street till there's clear sight vision? Or is it graded, um? Still slope going up all the way up to the sidewalk, I, I saw that one drawn, it appeared to me that it might have leveled off a bit, still have clear sight.
Good question.
Yeah, I was looking at the civil drawings right now to see the um specific slope, as noted. Um, it does, I mean, it does level opposite off as it reaches the sidewalk, it appears to, um, but. I, I guess it, yeah, it's, it's made to meet the grain, um, and we're, traffic is going to be very minimal coming in and out of this, um, and we. Thinking about that as well with the, the, the width of that, of that driveway being not super, super generous, the idea is that it, it does slow down the traffic. Innately as they move through it, so our, our intent and knowing that it's a small lot dedicated only to that hotel next door, it's really just to. Um, we're, we're should be minimal traffic coming in and out of it.
And the, there's line of sight, um, we've got the, the poured walls, and I'm not sure what the. Um, what the material is on the other building that's, you know, that uh sides the. Driveway, but I, I, they look like they should be able to get clear line of sight coming out of there without. Um, going into a tunnel.
Right, well, um, it does, so the, the seating area outdoor in front of the restaurant, like it is set up a little bit, but we do have those glass railings. Which really help with creating that visual kind of perspective and connection from people who are going up um that driveway, so there, um. The, the sightlines there would be visible, and you would be able to kind of cut through the corner with your vision line to, to see through it.
Okay, good. Any, any other questions from the commission?
Just that sightline, I'm concerned about the carage parked or sometime camper's parked there, it's just, it's gonna be a very difficult situation for people to get out there. Onto the street. It's something to be aware of.
Okay, um, are there any persons in the audience who wish to speak in favor of this project?
Uh, Karen, at this time, I do not have any hands raised.
Okay, um, are there any comments uh from the public in opposition to the development, or I guess we should just say general comments or questions?
And Karen, I still do not have any hands raised.
Okay, have we received any letters on this, this side of the development?
Yeah, no, no letters have been received for either one of these projects.
Okay, um. Uh, Bob, do you have any other comments or responses you want to make before we close the um? Comment period?
Um, just briefly, um, we, I did, we did have a chance to talk to the owner a little bit about the. The siding, um, knowing that that's, this would be potentially something else that comes up as well on this one, um, in terms of the finish level and that, that look. And um, it, we, we will be providing a, a sealer on it as a finish, um, I perhaps misspoke on the last round when we talked about it. Um, but there will be a sealed finish, and the goal will be to try to like maintain that as time goes on.
Okay, great, thank you, that helps. Uh, okay. I will now close the, did I hear somebody say something? Okay, uh, I will close the public comment portion of this discussion and will invite discussion um among the commission. You may ask questions of the applicant, audience members or staff, but we are now at the point where the discussion will be limited primarily to commission members. Any comments? Well, I'll just, I'll just throw mine out there, um, I would like to really compliment you on this design, I. Uh, I think it's forward-looking, it doesn't exactly fit in with what we have in Manzanita, but it fits. You've included enough elements to um make it a, a nice-looking building. I think that um you'll have a lot of success here, um, I think this is a good town for um, a good beer-oriented restaurant. Um, and uh, I appreciate all the work that you've gone in, that has gone into this, um. I just would really request that you pay attention to all of the things that we require. In a design review, it's a little bit different than a building plan review, um, because we're, you know, we're here as guardians of the, of the public trust. Um, and people are concerned about how things look and feel in Manzanita, and I think you've done a very, eh, my opinion is, it's, it's a very good job, and I appreciate it. Very much. Um, any, any other comments or questions from the commission? Anybody have any feelings, how you want to lean one way or the other on this?
Uh, Karen, I'm looking at the uh recommendations and conditions, and I don't, you know, based on the discussion, I don't see there's anything we need to add to it. To those unless somebody else does.
I would like to add what we just heard about the cedar having a uh, a finish on it. To um. Sort of protect the color of the wood. Unless, unless that is contained someplace in the plan that we can reference, I didn't run across that.
Are you looking for a specific product or just?
No, I, just the fact that it will be sealed with a transparence sealer to uh. Protect or maintain the appearance of the, the natural appearance of the wood as much as possible.
And that is the intent, yeah, we intend to use a clear sealer and um maintain that over time.
And it will be maintained over time, I guess, if necess, if necessary.
It's the intent, yeah.
So Karen, I guess I'd like to see that as a, added condition if we get to that.
Is the condition F? Is the condition F? John or Phil, do you have any? Any additions?
I'd like to pick up on Steve's comment with regards to the egress across the sidewalk from vehicles that are in those street parking spots. And it looks to me like if you were coming out of that spot with a vehicle that was other than an SUV, you might have trouble seeing pedestrian traffic coming from, I would say, the third street side. So if it's determined that some kind of a device needs to be provided with regards to warning pedestrians that a vehicle is exiting that site, would it be considered? Because I am concerned about, I know how busy that sidewalk gets, and I'm just very, very concerned about people trying to get off the property and having an altercation with a pedestrian that they can't see.
I guess I have another question as well, and that would be where is the signage on this restaurant going to be located?
Yeah, and I, okay, sorry. Can I talk? Sorry.
Yeah.
Yes, I can, I can tell you about that, and I'll show you on the drawing here. I, that was kind of discussed and planned, so I can show you. Whoa, where is that? Okay, so the signage on the elevation here, we're on sheet A 3.01B, detail one with elevation. We're indicating here that this is, and I just drew it here for reference. Again, this is, it would be within the 24 square foot requirement or maximum requirement for signage. We're only considering one sign on the building that would be here. And that would be the specific location of the sign.
And how would it be illuminated?
It would be illuminated by some direct illumination from above, so there's a small eyebrow canopy that'll point down, so that the light would be tucked in up there and only point towards the building and not shine off property.
Okay, great, thank you. And that's not shown on the elevation, or is it?
It is, it's not included in that drawing right now. I marked it up right now for the purposes of this discussion.
Thank you. I'd like to add that as an, as a as another condition, I guess. I hate to add it as a condition, but it just that you intend one sign on the front of the building. That meets the code. Anybody else? Anyone like to propose a motion? Is it too late in the day? I don't know, am I allowed to propose a motion as the chair?
Ah, yes.
Oh, okay, I never have.
Go ahead.
Okay, well, in that case, I would move that the planning commission approve the design review application by harder holdings for the Steeplejack Brewery Restaurant, adopting modified findings to the decision criteria and conditions of approval with the following modified language. And that would be Burt's recommendation that the wood be sealed and maintained with a clear sealer. And my suggestion that that the restaurant will have one sign on the front of the building illuminated from above. Can I have a second?
I'll second it, Karen.
Who is that, Steve?
Yes.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, you have a design review. And thanks, everybody, for staying an extra hour. It makes a difference. Scott, do we have anything coming up other than, I think we already talked about this, right? Or continuation of the other building in October, correct?
That's correct, Karen. The only thing that we're gonna have from October is the continuation.
Okay, and what do we have in November?
At this time, I have nothing scheduled. I would imagine we're probably gonna have something for the Highlands coming up.
Okay. We don't typically meet in December. I just wanted to take a poll of, because it's so close to the holidays and people travel. Are any of the planning commission members gonna be unavailable in December? If we do need a meeting, I just wanna, Phil, you're gonna be gone?
Last two weeks, Karen, maybe possibly two and a half weeks.
Okay, so yeah, our meeting would be on the 19th, and you'll, you won't be available for that.
That's correct.
Yes? Okay, so we'll have to make sure if we do have a December meeting that Leah's available, otherwise we won't have a quorum. With down Jenna. Okay, I think that's it. On my end, does anybody else have anything to say before we go? Nothing, I will call this hearing closed. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you.
Here, have a good evening.
Good night.